Today, we're happy to have with us the Iowa Chamber Alliance lobbyist. For us, he's kind of our angel as far as keeping us connected with the legislature, the progress and the policy and everything that's going on. So I'm going to turn it over. First of all, just housekeeping. Would you please just turn off your microphones, everyone? But that by no means means that we don't welcome your questions. So if you want to use the chat box, you're welcome to do that. Or if you're comfortable with the raise your hand mechanism, go ahead and do that. So I'll keep an eye on it. I know Steve will too. But I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Government Affairs, Steve Furman, to introduce Dustin a little further and then we'll get started with our conversation. So Steve, take it away.
Thank you, Carrie. This is sort of an annual event where we've had our Chamber Alliance partner Executive Director come and speak to our group about what happened in the legislative session, what didn't happen and how it affects business in Iowa in general. This year, we're pleased to have with us once again Dustin Miller. Dustin is an attorney at the Ny Master Law Firm. And he, along with Brad Eppertley, provide most of the lobbying services to the Alliance. We partner closely with them as do the other 15 largest chambers and economic development organizations in the state to sort of have the day-to-day presence that we need in the Capitol. And then people like myself and others in similar roles in other communities show up when necessary to try to provide a local view on a particular issue. Dustin does a great job of that. He's also got a long and outstanding career in government affairs, public affairs. And so with no further ado, and I think I've stroked him appropriately, I'll introduce to you Dustin Miller for a recap of our 2020 legislative session. Dustin?
Well, thank you, Steve and Carrie, and happy to do this. And thanks, thanks to all of you for participating virtually. Hopefully sometime in the near future, we'll all be able to get together. But as Carrie and I were discussing before we jumped on, you know, a lot of these things seem to work a lot better. And, you know, hopefully we can get this wrapped up pretty quickly and people can walk over to their conference room and start their 9:30 meetings a lot easier. But thank you again for the time and hopefully I can cover quite a bit of what was really strange. You know, there's different, it's difficult to come up with a different term other than unprecedented for what we've all experienced since, since March and really since the first of the year. And the legislative session was no different in, you know, this new normal that we're all interacting with. The legislative session, if people remember, really paused in that second funnel week. So in mid-March. So when we came back for this, you know, seven to 10-day session, there were still people who really wanted to get some policy across the finish line. However, you know, the, the actual makeup of what was going on in the Capitol was different. You know, where you could go, who you could talk to, how you could interact in committees and subcommittees was very challenging. And quite honestly, you know, the legislature is no different than what you're seeing in your communities. There's a lot of tension and, and a lot of polarization. So even getting, even once you were able to get time with someone, there was just a natural kind of bowing up from, from everyone. So, so those last seven to 10 days were very challenging. And it's, it's reflective of, again, what, what we're seeing at the national level and likely what you're seeing at your, at your local community level. You know, maybe Furman could, at the end of this, give us a little rundown of what 1968 was like, because I don't know. But, you know, this, this is very challenging times, especially if you're trying to, if you're really trying to make policy and good policy, it's very challenging. But in those last final days, we did have some real bright spots. And what I would say is overall, the business community fared very well. The business and economic development community fared very, very well. Now, the Iowa Chamber Alliance, as Steve mentioned, represents the largest economic development corporations and chambers across the state. We've really focused our priorities over the past couple of years to focus upon attraction and growing this, growing Iowa, which we leave to be kind of amorphous because growing Iowa to us is not just economics, but also being a welcoming place where we can grow the state's population. Because, you know, before this pandemic, we were all dealing with a massive workforce development, workforce shortage. Now, again, how that moves forward is going to be challenging, but still in those veins, we saw some real progress. The way we've broken it down for the Chamber Alliance is into four main areas. And what typically you've seen in the past out of chamber groups is, you know, a real focus on probably tax at the, at the lead. But ours has really shifted to talent. And that's really broad from a, an attraction standpoint, from a growth standpoint and from a development standpoint. And we obviously focus still in the economic development space. We know that expansion and attraction of new businesses doesn't happen without a good set of incentives. When we have these discussions about, with some economists who don't necessarily agree on the incentive side, I always say to them, well, if everybody was a pacifist, this would be easier. But since everybody's armed, you have to have a good batch of incentives in order to get things across the finish line from an attraction and expansion standpoint. But obviously, we still very much focused on business climate, taxation, regulation. I know some folks will have some questions likely about the liability protection bill that passed related to COVID-19, which I'll cover. And then finally, infrastructure. And we actually saw positive things in each one of those areas that I'll go through briefly. On the talent side, we again saw Governor Reynolds push a lot more initiatives related to her Future Ready Iowa. That was actually signed yesterday. It has some of the same, you know, last dollar scholarships, other things that we've, the expanded apprenticeship program, things that we've seen in the past. One of the differences this year is there was a lot of focus in the Chamber Alliance included on childcare. Now, just because of the nature of the end of session and with the budget challenges, we didn't see all the childcare bills that we would like. The Chamber Alliance really looks at childcare, that it, it really needs a holistic approach. It can't just be one thing. Because, you know, it's not just the employers, it's the employees and, and honestly, the entrepreneurs. How do you support childcare centers that, that want to get going? So in that, the one thing that did pass this year is in the Future Ready Iowa bill, where there's an expansion to childcare challenge program. And the real goal here is to come up with innovative solutions to childcare centers, whether they're employer-based, whether they're community-based. And so those are the, those are the expansions that we saw this year in the Future Ready Iowa. Also, one of the things that we worked very hard on is universal licensure. This is something that's been seen as very successful for other states in removing some barriers for, for different professions. We were heavily involved because not all licenses are the same, obviously. So we worked very hard on this bill to make sure that it was, that we did have the ability to attract people from other states that were qualified. And we tried to limit the barriers to entry for them to come into the state. However, trying to be sensitive to, you know, especially some of your more professional degrees, CPAs, engineers, if there's already a compact or reciprocity going on in those professions, we didn't want to upset anything that was already taking place in those. Also on the talent side, one of the best moments I've seen in the Iowa legislature was towards the end of session and your, your local legislators were heavily involved and really Representative Smith in developing what they've termed as the first step in kind of a justice reform and working on some things. This is really related to trying to get at the bad actors in this situation and looking at enforcement against certain police practices and those sorts of things. We did register for that. One of the things that the Chamber Alliance did first and foremost, though, was to reach out to our law enforcement community. Because what we didn't want to do is, is be seen as, as being anti-law enforcement, as all of us want to be, is stand in the middle of this and make sure that we're trying to bring people together. And with the blessing of the law enforcement community of understanding that what we're trying to do is get at the bad actors. This, this was overwhelmingly bipartisan vote. It happened in less than a day. Obviously, the work leading up to it took a lot of time, but it was a really nice break from pretty hyper-partisan polarization, as you could imagine, mask, no mask sorts of things at the end of session. This was a really nice moment where people came together and the governor stood on both the floor of the House and the Senate as, as it passed and went across the finish line. On the economic development side, there's a new tool for your community that Carrie and Steve are aware of. But in, in 2014, the legislature passed the Iowa Reinvestment Act, which is essentially a sales tax TIF, where you can create a district that would utilize sales tax and capture the, the sales tax growth in that area for an economic development program. And this got a new reauthorization of $100 million, which there's projects all across the state that have utilized this program. So an additional $100 million for that in a time where the budget was status quo is big. The Chamber Alliance has worked really hard on quality of life initiatives and, and funding for that. And we were very supportive of the governor's Invest in Iowa project that, program that would have instituted the sale, three eighths of a penny on Iowa and then utilize those funds for quality of life initiatives. However, that was paused, obviously, with, with the COVID-19 pandemic. So to get $100 million for economic development and quality of life projects is, is pretty exciting. On the business climate side, the Department of Revenue had not passed a department bill, had not even offered one for five years. So they offered a bill this year that was pretty expansive, that mainly addressed changes to the federal code from a few years ago. And then also, the state passed a pretty, pretty massive tax reform bill in 2018. But the nature of how they negotiated that tax bill is no one got to see a whole lot of what was in it. So a lot of the department's bill was fixing unintended consequences of that bill in 2018. One of the major things that impacts your community is they did include the Global Intangible Low Tax Income, which is just the worst acronym of guilty. But they, they passed that along with this very technical nuance, 638, which basically what it was is when we couple with the federal tax code, folks like deer in your community who would have global income were getting taxed in a way that they had never had before in a pretty sizable chunk. So this does not divert any revenue away from the budget because it had never been taxed before. And, and hopefully, it helps us avoid any disruptions from corporations in the state that wouldn't be taxed in a way that, that they had been in the past. The legislature passed a status quo budget basically for this year. Typically, we see the budgets broken into multiple different budget areas. This basically worked through two, kind of three major budget bills where everything was shoved together. It gave a tremendous amount of flexibility over to the governor and the Department of Management to implement over the next year. If anybody remembers, you know, the 2008, you know, recession, 2009, heading into that 2010 session, the legislature did have to come back and de-appropriate, which is the 10% across-the-board cuts. And I think politically, a lot of people want to be very sensitive and conservative in budget estimates to avoid some of those, you know, coming back and which can be very, very tricky. And giving flexibility to the governor of the Department of Management hopefully avoids that by the administration determining where, where cuts should occur. The big one that people, and I'm guessing they might have some questions on this, is there was a bill passed on COVID-19 liability protections. This got probably more partisan than it needed to be. What I would say to you is the goal here is if people are taking the right protections, that they should have the ability to have a higher standard of somebody trying to determine that they were responsible for somebody contracting COVID-19. Typically, you know, I know that you guys have issues in your community where it may be easier, is easier to determine, you know, direct causal connection. But typically, when, when you're looking at all businesses, that, that's a really difficult causation to prove. So what this really does is, is provides three separate protections. One being a products liability protection on personal protective equipment on PPE, liability protections for healthcare providers, and then the major one being a premises liability. And this is the one based upon the causation. So if somebody is taking precautions, if they've implemented what the CDC or the governor is doing, ultimately, they would, there would be a certain threshold that people have to get over in order to prove a claim. This, hopefully provide, the goal here is, you know, and this is what you heard going into the session, is getting Iowa back to work, getting Iowa back to work. This is probably the, the thing that I would point to, that I would have expected them to address, and they did, in probably the most consequential thing that a state, state legislature could do from an individual day-in, day-out employer perspective, employee perspective. On the infrastructure side, the governor also passed her next round of Empower Rural Iowa. This bill this year is, is almost primarily solely focused on broadband infrastructure. There had been kind of a group pushing for technological, technology agnostic to this because if you're trying to reach a, a community of 100 people, how you get there, you know, shouldn't be criticized all that much. Basically, the way they did that was a higher rate of incentives for better technology that, in a preference for fiber. And then finally, the, the last thing on the infrastructure side, and I know Carrie had asked about this a number of times, but Mid-American Energy worked together with agricultural groups and environmental groups and solar advocates to develop a solar bill and a compromise between those groups that kind of creates a playing field where now people who are putting up individual solar panels in their, you know, in their business and on their house. And this is really focused on the term distributed generation. Somebody, somebody putting up a solar panel, not to sell to the utility, but to utilize for themselves. This kind of creates a, a playing field where those folks are held harmless, but gives more certainty to Mid-American and Alliance Energy as they go build utility scale. Overall, as I mentioned, it's, it was a good session for business. And I don't think that was what we possibly thought was going to occur when we walked in on June 3rd. But overall, by the time they ended on June 14th, it was a very good session for business. And one thing that I should say is that, you know, we're still within the 30-day veto period for some of these bills. We are seeing batches of those get, get signed by the governor daily. But in, in the end, the things that I've spoken about, I don't see any issues as far as signature. Steve?
Thank you very much, Dustin. It's a good overview and recap. I'm going to check here quickly. I've been kind of watching the chat box, but so far, people are being reserved. So perhaps I'll ask a first question. What do you think the long-term impact of this COVID-19 business is going to be on, on the state, on its policy, on its budget, so on? What do you think?
A good question. And I think the big key here, first and foremost, is if you didn't know this, there's an election this November. And that is, is going to play a major part in what the long-term aspects of this are. You know, and, and not speaking either side of the aisle, it's just that, that's a reality that we're all going to have to deal with up until November. And honestly, as we see this, they'll be posturing on both sides. Somebody's not doing enough, somebody's doing too much. And I, and I think too, with that, not only do we have COVID, but, you know, with, with the civil unrest too, and, and, you know, how that ultimately plays out. But from a business perspective, what do I think is going to occur? We do know that the governor has just put together an Economic Recovery Task Force. Within that, there'll be a work group related to economic growth, which, which I will serve on. And they are going to look pretty heavily at incentives and tax review. And the Chamber Alliance has always been very open about, we're willing to have a discussion about business incentives, but let's make sure that the resources we give that, that are for business incentives, if they're restructured, go towards businesses and not some other priority. Before this, before this crisis too, Steve, you know, we talked about, you know, very extremely low unemployment, which had pretty massive impacts to employers. We were all talking about workforce. Well, now with 44 million people unemployed across the country and a couple hundred thousand here in the state, how does that change? You know, yeah, maybe, maybe somebody has access to workforce that they didn't before, somebody that needs a job, but that person might not be trained for what you need. So, you know, that's a new challenge for us. But I'm going to give a big caveat to all of this, a big but. And, and maybe Carrie can confirm for this, but in our membership, what's been very counterintuitive, the positive spin of this is the prospect pipeline across the state has been surprisingly full. We're seeing expansions that maybe somebody talked about a number of years ago popping up, brand-new companies with pretty major investments. So that's been a really positive surprise, which has led us, Steve, to your question, the long-term impacts is, hey, Governor and Director Durham, don't, let's not take our foot off the gas pedal because all of us are going to need resources, whether it's workforce development resources or incentives themselves to capture this, these new prospects.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. We do have a question from Keith. Keith had liked to open up the line so he could ask Dustin a couple of questions. So Keith Kispary from the airport.
Morning, Dustin, and thank you for being with, with Avless today. Would like to ask what, two questions if I could. What do you see as the future holds for actual transportation infrastructure funding and improvements and how the, how the state is going to tackle reduced fuel tax revenues and everything that goes along with that? We're seeing that on the aviation side as significantly depressed. And then number two, with regard to the job front and the workforce issue, do you see more opportunities, not just for you and I graduates, but also graduates throughout the Iowa college and university system? And thank you.
Yeah, good, good questions. And as you know, Keith, especially in your business, what the state can provide is, is pretty limited in comparison to what the federal government can provide. We're seeing a lot of movement on the federal government side on transportation infrastructure. I think obviously with the fuel tax increase, what was from 2015, I think, 2016, sometime in there. You know, that people are already understanding that fuel tax is, I represent the grocers as well, it's kind of like selling cigarettes, right? Like our market is going down. Same kind of thing with fuel. People are just utilizing less and less. So how are we going to deal with that? The problem is, is as you well know, Keith, in the math of this is the costs of infrastructure on the transportation side just seemingly increase exponentially year after year. So, you know, how this gets approached, I think, I would look, myself, I would look more towards these federal programs. The state has talked about their reduction in, in fuel tax being utilized as this flexibility within, that the, the governor was given in their status quo. However, you know, ultimately, the fuel tax is constitutionally protected. So DOT has the ability to kind of put their, their foot on the gas pedal and throttle and take it off and on as the revenues come in. I do think you're going to see some delays in projects as they decipher, you know, how, how big of an impact this is. And this kind of goes back to Steve's question too of the long-term impacts. I don't think we're really actually going to know the state's long-term budget impact well into probably the fall. Because I will say the economic projections I've seen, at least in state presentations, have not thought about a potential, you know, new closure if there's larger COVID outbreaks. So the state budget impact, I think, is something that is constantly in flux. As far as opportunities you've seen, and I see Randy on here, I mean, you and I has done a really nice job of transitioning, which I'm sure Randy would tell you can be a real challenge at a, at a regency institution. But transitioning to get people, to get people into jobs that are available. And I think there's obviously a massive opportunity, as I say to you, you know, 44 million people unemployed in this country, that sounds great if you're somebody who had, you know, 500 jobs at a plant that weren't filled. But if those folks don't have skills or don't have the ability to get trained to get the skill, it, it's really kind of a, a false narrative. My guess is if we got back to full employment, you would still have the same, same issues where people need to be trained. But I, you know, folks like Randy are doing a great job of transitioning the university's thought process to, and it could be a real challenge, you know, if you're, you know, changing the thought process of a geology professor. You know, all they want to do is teach a kid in the classroom and don't really think about what the job is afterwards. They would tell you that's not their job. Randy and the university's done a really nice job of transitioning for this to be practical. And I, I think there's immense amount of opportunities. It's a matter of transitioning to, to where those, those opportunities lie. And the prospect pipeline, what I'd say to you, Keith, technology is, is the big growth area. Big, small, you know, the Iowa City area, it's very healthcare-related, it's just all very transitional. I know of some large tech-based things that are in and around your plants in the Cedar Valley area that are very interesting. So as far as space, if you're advising a 17-year-old, what do I do with my life? I'd say find something in tech and engineering.
Good point, good point. Next, Mayor Hart, Mayor Quentin Hart would like to ask a question, if we could open up his line. And I think we're opening Quentin's line right now. Obviously, I don't have control.
Well, before I can, as he gets on, I see a question from, from Chris Hansen. How do I feel about the REC only being reduced 6%? I kind of alluded to that.
Point six.
Point six. I kind of alluded to that. I am very excited to see that, for those of you that don't know, but Debbie Durham has hired an economist. And she was the economist for Principal Financial, I want to say. And she is really good and I'm excited to see that because, you know, I, I am concerned. I, I don't know if point six is enough. And as I mentioned before, I don't think we're going to fully know the budget impact until, you know, September or October. And then the problem will be, is where are we at with COVID? Where are we at with, with, you know, kind of locals unrest? And, and where are we at politically, right? It's not easy for a legislature to come back in and reassess a budget if we have to get there. Mayor Hart, have you joined?
Took your mute off, right?
He's not, according to what I see, he is no, no longer on.
Yep, I think he had to drop off.
Okay. Well, then we won't worry about him. But who's next? Who else has a question? Raise your hand or use the chat box. Oh, we're waiting for another question. I've got a question for you, Dustin. Other than COVID, what do you see are, are key issues that will likely lead the priority list for 2021?
I, you know, I think the election, and this is not just, you know, punting to this year for the election because of, you know, the high-profile nature. But I think any election year, especially where you have some thin majorities, and I think, you know, a 53 majority in the House really will, will change what the perspective is of 2021. If the House retains its majority, the priorities that... If the House retains its majority, the priorities that the legislature will go after will be different than if they don't. And even if they retain and the Senate's majority, you know, slightly lowers as well, it can change the priorities immensely. Because really, then you get into what can, what can you pass? And that was part of the, the issue at the end of this session, Steve, is the Senate with a 3218 majority can pass virtually anything they want because they have votes to spare in the House, just by the nature of a smaller majority. And with, and with some absences too, it just is more challenging to get things across the finish line. So it really remains to be seen. I would say though, you know, watch closely what happens on this workforce front to get a sense of what people want in 2021.
Good. Let me check again.
Steve, I've got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Dustin, on a recent call with the Iowa Business Council and Iowa Economic Development, a lot of discussion about, from the Business Council companies, do you have a contingency plan for a closure, return to COVID, whatever, the second round, whatever you want to determine? Every one of the Business Council companies said they had a contingency plan in place. With the way the budget was put together and the Department of Management, the governor having a lot of flexibility, do you think some adjustments can be made that would not require the legislature to come back and take some action?
I, I, good question. And I think that's kind of the intention is to avoid, really to avoid the budget miss, the budget, the bad budgeting in 2010, coming out of the recession. That's, I think, the intention is to avoid those sorts of things. Now, if it's only that slight downward adjustment, like Chris mentioned, that's a whole lot easier. But, you know, if you see a second round, major closures, you know, and, and there's, there's bigger things at stake too. You know, there's 52 new ethanol waivers that are currently being, you know, contemplated by EPA. That would maybe put a nail in the coffin of quite a few ethanol plants if, if some of those were, were approved. So some of those sorts of things could have, and, and you know, if an ethanol plant closes, that means not only are the workers going home, it means less electric usage, less water usage. The, the, the downward effects are pretty major. You know, for your guys' area, you know, China offered to buy $32 billion in ag products this year. They bought, they bought six and have said they're going to buy no more. So, you know, there's larger national and multinational things that have, that are not, that are pretty strong headwinds. So my guess is the goal was to give as much flexibility as possible to the governor to develop this. But in the end, we just don't know what the budget impact will be right now, their projections.
Tim has a question.
Hey Dustin, Tim Verhan with ISG. Could you speak to the CM@Risk bill that made it through Senate, stalled out in the House, likelihood that that passes next session?
Yeah, a lot of effort went into that. One of the things I would tell you to look into is there's a public improvements bill that Iowa Association Municipal Utilities passed that is going to be pretty useful to your industry. But CM@Risk, you know, in, in, it's kind of one of those deals where, you know, they, they put their finger in the dike, but there were four other holes. You know, they, they took a shot at the region's ability to use design build. They also took a shot at labor in that bill to try and get it across. And ultimately, what, what took it down, Tim, is, is some individual local contractors that were very important and it became constituent issues where, again, with only a 53-person majority, you obviously can't afford to lose many people. The likely, and what's interesting is the, the opposition to an alternative project delivery method in the state have been ABC and AGC, and they were actually supportive of this. So.
And who are those executives?
Associated General Contractors and Associated Building and Builder, I can't remember the ABC. But they, it's going to be a real challenge, Tim. That's why I'd say in your industry, really, I would take a look at, and I think it's Senate filed or House filed 2536, don't quote me on that, I can get it to you, or Derek Johnson in your, you know, from your office. But that, that, that's pretty useful, that it was in both the design build bill and the CM@Risk bill and passed separately by itself when we didn't see success for those.
Mayor Hart's back on the line. Mayor Hart, do you have a question?
Hi Dustin, good morning to everyone as well. Yeah, so I know there's just a little conversation about any type of civil unrest, and it was conversation. Thank you for bringing it up about police reform in those areas. But what I was also wondering, and Carrie probably knows this better than any, but there's been a lot of conversation around here with some of our minority entrepreneurs as far as trying to find minority accelerators, trying to find a startup and support. And we know that COVID, if it has an impact on businesses, it's probably just as double as tough as it is for minority entrepreneurs and minority businesses and small business mom and pop shops. But has there been any conversation, or I know you mentioned that you're going to be on a governmental committee with the governor? Is there any way that you can make sure you bring a couple of those issues to the forefront when we're talking about support for small businesses, entrepreneurship, that we take a look at any type of special program for some of our minority businesses to grow and thrive too? And I could email via Carrie to you or just, just want to make sure that that also is at the forefront in all of these dollars that will be sent to our local communities.
Yeah.
I just want to mention, add on to what the mayor said, there is a lot of interest in our business community about, about really supporting and getting behind an incubator for minority-owned businesses. So, I mean, we've, we've had that conversation even before the unrest, but it's been even prioritized even more now. So we'd be happy to give you more information, Dustin.
Yeah, and with the PPP, when that came out with the CARES Act, you know, a lot of focus was on that. And I think what gets lost is that the state did their own, you know, $10,000, $25,000 grant program that was oversubscribed. They were going to do 10 million initially, and they got applications for 148 million. It was good to see, even with that oversubscription, that there was a set aside separate program for minority and female-owned businesses. That money did get utilized, and this is Iowa Economic Development Authority money, not federal money. That money did get utilized, but not as quickly as the other pot. But I, I was pleasantly surprised to see them do both aspects. Now certainly, you know, a $10,000 grant, no matter who owns it, is, is, is not a ton of money. The goal here was to try and get people, you know, past the issue. Don't think people realized, you know, how long and how deep the crisis would be. But certainly, I think you actually saw maturation of that as well in the PPP. Initially, it was all one bucket from the federal level. And then when they did the reauthorization, because they ran out of money in 10 days, the reauthorization had set asides specifically for, for minority businesses. So certainly, that's something that'll be on my mind as well. Mayor Hart, we want to make sure, especially for, for those folks, to get back on their feet, to have the tools to do that. And this is similar to my conversation on childcare, that's all-encompassing. And my goal will be to utilize and rely heavily on people like Carrie and Steve and, and those people I have across the state to tell me what they're hearing directly from those businesses that they need. Because if, if somebody is leasing a property, then, you know, mortgage assistance is not helpful. And, you know, just an arbitrary example, but I want to know what actually would be helpful. Is it payroll-specific? Is it infrastructure? Is it equipment? What is going to not just get them past the crisis, but capture more market beyond this as well?
Good, thank you. Does anybody else have a final question? Raise your hand, send it to me in the chat. We've got a couple, three minutes yet, so want to get our monies worth.
Hi, this is Mayor Green, if it's all right.
Yes, sir.
So one thing that I would love to do as a new elected official is to have a chance to get down to Des Moines. And I joked with Eric Giddens about, it was like a take-your-local-official-to-work day. Is, are there programs that, that you already have that could help just for me, better understanding how the process works and when the legislature meets and what all the different jargon means? Or would you be willing to consider that?
Yeah, I think a big key is, you know, any advocacy group, whether it's through the chamber, you know, Steve does these sorts of things where, you know, mine might be business-specific. As far as, you know, elected official, you know, your advocacy group, the League of Cities or, and I think you're also, you know, I don't think size-wise, but ultimately, the League of Cities has a lot of information out there, and they typically do, going into session, they'll do a, you know, a 101 as far as what is operating, you know, those sorts of things. But certainly, if you were to come down, I'm happy to, to show you around when we're in the Capitol. Because, you know, any of those 101s, you know, are only so good. Eventually, there is a reason that, that what I do is a profession, right? Just like what you do, right? And so getting to understand the inside baseball can, can be kind of challenging.
And also, Mayor, I'd recommend, the League of Cities has great resources for just that very thing. And I know that you'll be getting more and more involved with that as your career, I mean, as your term gets going too, so that they've got great resources that would do just exactly what you, what you ask for. And Dustin used to be part of League of Cities. So he knows.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did. Well, I think that this is going to conclude our session this morning. Dustin, thank you again so very much for your help, not only with this program, but also through all the time that we spend together in Capitol and as a group of leaders from the various communities, working with you to develop priorities and so on and so forth. We really appreciate your help and thank you again so much for this morning.
Just want to thank you also, Dustin, and to let everybody know that not only is Dustin our executive director for Iowa Chamber Alliance, he also has a really good relationship with the governor's office and those in the governor's office. That really helps us get, get really specific and critical information. So we appreciate all that you're doing for all of us across the state.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, we can see one another in person here in the next year or so.
3D.
I'd love, I'd love to get back up there. Yeah. So Steve can cook me some shrimp.
There you go. I can, I can make that happen.
Thanks to the rest of you. Thank you all for joining us this morning. We'll have other town meetings, watch for Betty's invitation along the way. Thank you. And thanks, Steve, for facilitating, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.